Good evening and welcome to our third session of Goals and Priorities for our Department Heads to Share with the Town Board. Today is January 26th. It's Wednesday at 6:00 PM, and I believe we will start with Ms. Lizak.
Thank you.
Our tax receiver.
Good evening. Thank you. And let me start by thanking the board for reappointing me at the last meeting. I sincerely appreciate that. Our goals and priorities are as follows. My first is to purchase signage for directly above our respective windows, tax and clerk. Seems that when people walk into our building and get to the rotunda, they're not quite sure where to go. So if there was a big sign, a bold big sign in lights, no, I'm just kidding. It would be obvious to residents where to go, so maybe we can work.
We have a code that you have to follow, by the way, town code, so.
I'm sorry?
You have a town code you have to follow, by the way.
Understood. Oh, for signage? Got, oh. We continue to develop our procedure manual for everyday tax processes. You never know when I might get sick or Lisa might get sick or, gosh forbid, get hit by buses. We would like to have a book, a manual, where Mr. Ockeden could come in and post a tax payment if necessary. So that's being worked on, and we mainly work on that in the summertime because that's when we have most of our downtime. We have our mail slot, thank you very much. That was installed in mid-November, I want to say, and it's been very, very popular. It's much bigger, so people can drive, and they feel more secure because it's kind of inside, and it's very deep. It's a very big box, so there's no issues with having to come on a weekend because it's going to be overflowing. We'd have a big problem if it was.
I'll tell you, I've had more than one person say how great that is.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good, very good. So thank you for having that installed. I continue to train Lisa on aspects of daily activities that I am typically responsible for, again, you know, cross-training each other just in case one isn't able to be there. We continue to review the website and work with PCTV. Thank you, David, and your team, for appropriate modifications given the tax season that's upon us to make sure residents are informed accordingly. Our office has a Toshiba Copier printer and a smaller HP printer. The HP printer is kind of on its last life, and with the volume of printing our office does of tax receipts and dog license renewal notices and such, the smaller printer is really getting a beating, and it's not dead yet, but it's close. So if we could possibly work on that, that would be great. Identifying resources that we might need in the 2022 budget. Personnel, Lisa and I are doing fine. Expense for capital funding, we already installed our slot with not too much of expenditure, I believe, and specialized support such as computer technical assistance, software training, none are really necessary at this point in time. Any training that we would need to run the program would be given by the county, and they haven't given us any new programs as yet, so it's pretty, pretty easy to use. Ongoing training, again, the county provides any training we would need. I try to look online if there's anything specific that Lisa or I would be interested in that might potentially be free or, you know, low, low cost. Association of Towns also has many webinars that we could attend also, and we, if they're inexpensive, we, we try to attend those as well. And identifying major projects that involve other town departments. Again, the only other thing that I would add to this is the continued, the signage that we might want to add, and I wanted to thank Mr. Kreckman for adding the assessor sign. There was a paper sign there at one point, you might remember. Well, it's not paper anymore. It's the same as all the other departments, so that everyone knows that the assessor's upstairs. Accomplishments from 2021 Priorities and Goals. Many of our residents had asked for a credit card program to pay their taxes online. Well, that came to fruition in the school tax season of 2020, when COVID was rampant, and of course it is now too. It was good to have residents to be able to pay right online. It's very simple, easy for them to use. We have lower rates than the county does as far as credit card rates, and the e-check rate is one-tenth of what the county charges. Secondly, in an effort to make our office more efficient, we created a second cash drawer with the petty cash that we have. It comes in handy because there are those individuals who will come in and pay with thousands of dollars, and if the drawer is overflowing, it's easy to just take the drawer away, balance without having to have a customer wait for you, and pull the other drawer out so that we can balance the other one later. So that is in place and has been in place, well, since we reopened officially last tax, school tax season. And again, the procedure manual is being worked on, and I'm coaching Lisa on the things that I do on a daily basis so that she becomes familiar with those. And those are all of my goals and priorities. Are there any, any questions that people might have?
I just have one question.
Yes.
So the majority of people, when they're paying their taxes, are paying by check?
Typically, yes. I would say probably 80% pay by check.
Okay.
When the county offered that 0% for two, two tax seasons, that was great because everybody could get their points on their card and not have to pay the extra fee. But if you have a $2,500 tax bill, the, the percentage on that is probably about $75, $85. That's not very attractive to most people. But a lot of people are using the e-check, even on our website, and that's very convenient and, and not very expensive, so that's a good option to use as well.
Have you seen an increase or a decrease in in-person payments, or are there still a fair amount coming in? It seems pretty busy.
It's pretty busy, yeah. I would say we get between 30 to 50 people a day.
Okay. Still pretty busy.
Absolutely. And it will pick up because some people will think that the deadline's the end of this month, which is Monday, but the 10th is the day that the first payment or the full payment is due without penalty interest. So it'll start picking up even more, and our office should be ready for in-person payments. And many residents have commented that it's really nice to just walk in and not have to go through the rigmarole of the COVID.
So for the people watching at home, the thousands of people that are watching, what we've done for the tax season for sure is have Chris sitting at the receptionist area so that when somebody comes in from the public entrance, you are right there or someone is right there to assist them, and they don't need to worry about walking through the building or signing in at the kiosk. It's, I think, much more efficient, and it's very welcoming to have somebody there.
I've heard a lot of very positive feedback from the resident. Oh, this is really cool. I like this. Is this going to continue? Is this new? We just haven't used it in a while. So it's working out really well.
Well, we appreciate your willingness to do that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And now we have our town clerk, Ms. Stuckloff.
Okay, thank you, supervisor. Okay. So for 2022 Goals and Priorities, I am in the process of putting together bids to preserve and conserve more of our records that we have that are permanent in the vault. Originally, I thought I would only be doing zoning board minutes, but I've been able to figure out a way to do zoning and planning at the same time. I'm hoping to do a project where we have a company come in, we're going to do a bid. They'll come in, and I'd like to spread it out as a four-year plan so that we do not have to pay all up front, and what will happen is five to seven books will go out to the conservator and will return 10 to 12 books in place. The reason why is if you look at some of our records in the vault, you'll see there's binders that are overstuffed with thousands of paper, and it, and it has ruined paper. It is, it's just unsightly difficult to even handle. So, so I am hopeful that by March, we'll have something in place with a company that can conserve and preserve our records. And we did, if you remember in the past, I did a project similar to this in 2016 where I had a company come in and we preserved and conserved our minute books, our marriage books, and our cemetery books. And it really turned out to be a great project. It's easy to access, easy to view, easy to touch, and are making the permanent records actually be permanent without having to worry about it, you know, acid ruining it and, and all that kind of thing. So that project is first and foremost on my list for 2022. I have reached out to a number of companies, and some are from Honeyboy Falls, some are from Massachusetts. There's no conservator that can handle the project that actually is in Rochester, New York. I have been in contact with the Rochester Public Library and their executive director over there, who's also the historian, and she and I are working on finding people who will be able to do this type of project. So, and I'm also working with the New York State Archives. We have a new state archivist, Tom Ruler, and he's been very helpful in giving me some ideas on how to handle this project, so. Also, I, in regards to our records, I've developed a filing system that we're in the process of putting together. I've color-coded. Each department has their own color for their records that are stored in our vault in the basement, and it's, we have a key. I know, probably can't see very well with the colors, but, and this is going to make it so much easier for our department heads to find their records or, or for us to find it for them, and it's really very nice with, I mentioned one of the accomplishments from 2021, which was I implemented the possibility of getting a high-density mobile shelving. It made a lot more space for our records. We have quite, I think there's about 200 spaces that we have for boxes, extra boxes waiting to go in there, so it really has worked out great, and the filing system has been perfect. It's one of those cranks, the mobile shelving, so. So each department does have its own color code, and my staff and I can work with the department heads when it comes to finding the records that they need. Town elections, as you know, I'm very much involved in that. I secure all the polling sites, and so in March this year, I will be sending out contracts to all of our polling sites. As you know, I narrowed it down to 16 to save taxpayer money, and so I've, I continue to have relationships with the people, you know, executive directors and, and those directing those buildings, and so they'll be filling out the contract that I give them so that we have it set that we have our polling sites for the general election as well as if we have a June primary. Jan Berman, who has worked with us for quite a while at Oakwood Cemetery, before that was Bob Ockeden's dad, Bob Ockeden, Sr., I worked with for many, many years in regards to writing up the Oakwood Cemetery deeds, signing them, and keeping a file on them, and we have a new person, and then Jan Berman took Bob's place, and now we have a Christine McCormick. So I'm going to develop that relationship this year and make sure that everything goes smoothly when it comes to the Oakwood Cemetery deeds and how I file them and sign them and, and make sure that we have control on our Excel sheet. Selling permits, I am obviously continuing on posting it on our website when we have selling permits, companies going around town trying to do their sales. But recently, I started putting together an Excel sheet that has information from all our Monroe County towns saying how much that they are charging for application fees and subsequent selling permits for the people who are going around town, and I found that we do not charge much compared to these other towns. So I'm putting together an Excel sheet to show you what we might want to do. It would, I think it would be helpful in, in having the right type of people going door-to-door instead of some of these companies that we've had some difficulties, difficulties in the past. Obviously, there's, indicate ongoing specialized training, there's our New York State Town Clerk Association Conference that I plan to attend and to bring my deputy clerk this year. It's, it's a great, great conference where we meet with archivists and health department and everyone, everyone that we work with, the EC, Aga Markets, and learn a lot from them, and have a great time in meeting other town clerks from all over New York State and learn from them, and we learn from each other, so there's a lot of networking, too. And there's other educational meetings that we'll be attending as well, one for records management, one for becoming directors and such. I mean, I, as, as you know, I do have quite a lot here, but is there anything that you want to know specifically, or, and I, you can see what my accomplishments have been, so I, and I know time is of the essence, so is there anything you would like me to talk about in particular, or are you good?
No, I just want to mention that last year, the zoning board did have to go back to 1964 to find a record, and thank goodness, it was there. It was not in good shape, but it was there, and New York State does require you to keep hard copies of these things, so it's not like we can just scan everything up. That's not an option in this state, so we have to go through and preserve our records.
And that is why I, I have been working on this and wanted to continue. We did take a break for a little bit due to the pandemic, and, you know, there was a lot of difficulty with that, and, but now I feel confident that we can start up again, and so we're going to, we're going to start to expedite this as quickly as possible. A resolution will be in our, for our town board meeting on Wednesday to start the process.
Thank you so much.
Amy, can I ask you one question about the EZ Pass? I know that we, you started implementing that the last year, I believe, the end of last year. How we come in, are residents taking advantage of purchasing the EZ Pass for you?
So I have already had to order another set, so 25 or 30 come in a box. So we sold the first batch, which is very surprising to me because of COVID, and we started right in the crux of that whole pandemic, so it was very difficult to do the sales, but we get quite a few coming in. It's not as many as I expected if we hadn't had the pandemic, but it has definitely been a steady stream.
Now that we have Chris in the audience, you know, I know you work with Dave to get things up on the website as far as, you know, Passport Nights and, and those kinds of things, but, you know, that's what Chris is here for, is to get things out on social media as well, so.
And speaking of, and speaking of Passport Night, I have, you probably saw that, I had wrote in there that I, I used to do three to four events a year, and again, that's something we stopped doing due to COVID, and I work with Monroe County Clerk's Office when we do this, so it's a joint effort, and so I'm hoping that we can start again this year, but it will all depend on the county wanting to be able to come out still and do this kind of thing during the pandemic.
Thank you so much. Anything else? All right, thank you.
My pleasure. Have a good night, everybody.
You as well. Thanks for coming. And Mr. Renner is at the table. Would you like to go next?
Do you want to take it out of order? Sure. So for the top sheet there, it's just the accomplishments for 2021. Being a busy year, we still were able to knock off some projects through our facility, first being our hearing assistance system within the auditorium, so we are now compliant for ADA purposes. If residents are coming in and need hearing assistance, we do have a wireless system available to them. In addition to that, now all town-created content is being closed captioned post-meeting recording, so for our viewers at home, regardless if it's on cable or over-the-top delivery, webstream, it's now available with closed captioning.
Wait, is it after, not like, not live?
It is not live. Live is an opportunity for us, but we are in a training phase of our AI information for doing that, so as we go through boards, we need to train the system for pronunciation as well as name recognition. There is the option to go to a live platform for that in the future. We're not comfortable with the results of that at this time, and one of the key things is with our boards is to use their microphone.
So if we went back, I mean, I hope we don't have to, but if we went back to being all virtual, I mean, that, I mean, we do that all the time in different meetings on Zoom because there's that option, it's free now to, can, is that something you can't not do downstairs in your?
So Zoom is with the, your, cost of your account for that, so that, that's covered there. The product that we currently utilize allows us to go into the live mode. That is an added fee to our budget for doing that because we are not generating it across a webstream, and actually, what we would be doing is taking a feed that's in-house, sending it out over the internet to be captioned and bringing it back in to then marry up to the video. So because we are not just in a distribution that is strictly web-based, we are also on the cable side, and that we don't have a stenographer in-house or somebody to do live caption.
No, I understand.
So it's the aspect that our delivery platform is on multiple prongs outward, so we do need to utilize a third-party source for that.
Oh, okay. I did notice, I was looking at, what I was watching, I was watching some town meeting one night after it already ended, and I said, oh my gosh, there's closed captioning. I didn't even know it was there. That's, that's a great addition. It is.
Yep, and the next piece to that is going to be about language, because we do have some language barriers that we also need to overcome, and that's a discussion we're having.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And speaking about language, you can also translate on the website. That is capable.
Yes, the, the website is capable of doing a language translation. It's under the gear icon. It's one of the tools when the site was built that we built that into it, so you can choose from, I think it's around 60 different languages. You can switch the website, and that's one of the reasons why we tell people we don't like graphics, you know, to use information inside of a graphic, it needs to be spelled out, and it's a discussion we're going to have to have going forward about PDFs, too.
That'd be something worth advertising in some fashion, you know, because it's showing that we're being inclusive, right? We're reaching out, we're allowing for the translations, closed captioning, that's opening up to a whole segment of the population.
We're actually on it.
Oh, good. There you go.
You're going to hear a little more about that shortly.
Excellent.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, please. This is a dialogue between all of us. Archiving, so as we've gone through our videotapes and have looked back historically, now that we're all digital, we do have videotapes that still are requiring to be digitized and archived, but one of the long-term projects we had was for our audio tapes, which dates us back into, some of them back into the late 70s. This has been a project ongoing for a number of years, but I'm happy to say that all of the physical tapes now have been encoded, and we're in the process now of editing those together to make sure that all of the tapes for one particular meeting are there, and then from that standpoint, we will then have an audio file available to staff as well eventually to the residents. So that's going to be an ongoing project. Partnerships. We have done quite a bit with our partnerships, so with the school district being probably the largest partnership we have at the moment, it's been a three-year partnership, and then for the last two years, we've been in contract with them, so that has been successful. We've assisted the town of Aronac quite with the rebuilding of their new playback system. It's going to mimic much to what we do here, but that's going to open up opportunities for future shared services as well. Production facility, we've all heard about COVID. It's been on the topic of pretty much everybody's mind, but the operation of what you see here for the format of the meeting was a result of COVID. We brought this together, we made the transition between a physical in-body to the remote, to a hybrid situation capable, and last year, we were able to finalize our wiring and our engineering for that to take away the duct tape and pick up the shoestrings and put that stuff away and get this in more of a formal fashion going forward. Productions, this, this one's kind of a significant number to us. It's, we don't know really where the year has gone, but we completed 243 productions in 2021. That's 113 over 2020, so an 87% increase. Prior to COVID, we were averaging about 75, so we are up 237% compared to 2019.
But isn't that because you're doing Conservation Board, Historic Preservation Board, Library Board, who never were on before?
It's a combination of meetings, both the live televised side, but also in-house. There's, we have a significant increase in the number of meetings that we do in-house just during the daytime for like PRC, DEC, Aronac quite Bay Water Management Group. They're utilizing this room because we're doing them in a hybrid situation, so we're bringing those together. In addition to that, but that's also taking in what we do with the schools, so the amount of production we do with them.
Yeah.
So significant increase. Website services, initiated the archiving of all of our social media and websites, so for the accounts that we have now are being captured in real time for any information that is being changed on them. So if somebody makes a comment, a like, a post, it is being archived, so we now meet the requirements of New York State Archives. The DPW department was, when we launched the website, we had a module in place for residents to provide feedback as far as service requests to DPW. We found that to be a little bit more cumbersome, so we simplified that process last year, developed a manual for the DPW department staff, and that has been launched in the fourth quarter of last year, so we've started seeing that being utilized. And the aspect for the cutover, this is our first year that we had a transition between 2021 and 2022 for a major cutover on the new website, and there was a little, some growing pains through that, but we did get through it, so we were happy to see that that worked out well for all of us. As far as numbers go, we're averaging about 25,000 views a month, so we're right around 300,000 for the year. So what are we going to work on? So first thing we have is, we were awarded as part of last year is a grant. There'll be more information coming on this, but I want to just kind of highlight that that grant is going to introduce multiple projects to us over the course of the next three years. So one of them being the amphitheater in Penfield Little League, we're going to be working towards getting outdoor cameras to be able to cover events more efficiently down there and cover more events. Fiber optics to go to each of those facilities that will help with both our operations but also provide data outreach as well as security camera capability. Replacement of our production audio board, enhancing our web streaming. That's something that we have seen a growth on our over-the-top delivery platforms. An example to you is Roku alone. We have over 60,000 subscriptions to the Penfield TV app on Roku, Apple TV, Amazon Fire.
Wow, that's great.
Web video streaming will continue, and we're also going to work at trying to launch a separate app for strictly the web streams and the We're also going to work at trying to launch a separate app for strictly the web streams themselves.
Sorry, could I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
Did you do 60,000?
That is correct.
So that's greater than the number of, it's not limited to just Penfield residents?
Correct. What you will find is with our snowbirds, you have a traveling in and out. But also many of our events that we do within the community reach beyond borders. So from the aspect of grandparents or other family members that live outside of the town who may want to watch a Little League game or a concert or a meeting can then tune in. But in many homes, somebody does, doesn't own one device. They have multiple devices. We don't, we do see numbers go down, but we see numbers go back up. And as people age out devices, there's a reason for a reinstall, but we do see that age out. If they never uninstalled it, that number doesn't come out of the mix. But the new installs will show up. So to see 60,000 is a little bit of a shock when you think of the size of the population. But at the same time, it's not surprising when we think of how connected we are and the number of devices we will have in our homes.
So they're not 60,000 in unique users?
No.
They're just logs into?
Correct.
Okay, that helps.
Well, no, not logs in. That's how many times the app has been installed on a device.
So I'm thinking logs as in device-specific?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And replacement of our trailer, which is nearing 14 years old. But we've also realized that the weight capacity of the axle has been exceeded a little too many times. So we need to up that. AV and IT technologies. Our nonlinear editor is in the process of being replaced. It was ordered last year. But with computer shortages and things, things have been dragged out a little bit longer, so that will be coming in. Auditorium PTZ is the cameras we use in this auditorium also are aged out to 10 years. So we are looking to replace these as well and with some better capable cameras and improving some of the flaws that we have in these. Expansion of our archive network for disaster data recovery. We, unfortunately with our department, the data that we create is a one-to-one ratio in its data. When we're recording tonight's meeting, it's being recorded at three gigs a minute. So we consume a lot of data through that process. Cable franchise agreement. For those of you who've been on the board know, but for the new members, you are the local franchise authority. And as part of the responsibility for a cable company to do business in the town, they need an active agreement with the town. This has been a process that's been going on for a number of years. It's been past due through the Public Service Commission has granted the spectrum to continue to operate. But we are continuing to work with our legal teams to come to a resolution with that. Drone program. The drone was grounded with some questions from insurance company, but also the fact that we also recognize we do not have a proper manual in place and to identify the use and how it's to be utilized. With COVID and the meeting increase, we had stepped aside from that and made that a low priority at the time. As time has allowed us to balance out our other workloads, we're going to reintroduce that and work to bring that back into the mix. Partnerships. As I had mentioned before, the school district, that's a year-to-year. We would like to try to have a contract with them in place prior to the end of their fiscal year, which is in June. So we'll be working with the supervisor to go through that. But beyond that, I've provided you a list of our other partners. Government TV policies. As we have changed our format, we've changed the types of meetings we do. We need to update our policies and how we cover meetings and what meetings do and do not get covered. Smart speaker support. This is one is a carryover. This is an area that we identified a year ago that has opportunity for us to utilize from meetings or other communication sources to be able to take the audio side of that and make it accessible through people's smart devices. Digital signage has been one that was tabled also with, through the COVID timeframe. But we're going to look to bring that one back through our facilities to help expand communications. Interpretation services. This is the one for that aspect of trying to bridge the gap with language with our staff. We're going to be researching a couple of companies. But the idea is that if somebody gets an individual on a phone, we can use this third-party service to help with that. But also if you have somebody that is in person, also to be able to call a number and have them assist you through that. Internet accessibility and communities, communication services. From the website side of these tasks that we have in front of us, one of the things we identified through the process of launching the new site was that the time it took to get through it and to do our due diligence with a vendor and work through it took longer than anyone had anticipated. And by the time that we get the site launched and start utilizing it, we can't sit back and wait for a period of time to pass before we start the process. So we have identified pluses and minuses to the new site. And based on that, we're going to begin the RFP process to go forward and to start looking at what the next site should look like based upon what we like and dislike about this one. But start fielding out vendors and the new opportunities that could be out there. By the time we go through and award somebody and go through another process, we're looking out at a five-year window here. So this is just the beginning of the process for us. But we need to continue this kind of in a perpetual motion of soon as we get one done, start evaluating and start building a case towards the next element. So you're going to find that website-wise, we are going to just be constantly moving forward with that. We constantly work with the staff ongoing to ensure the content's up to date, develop a town policy for the website and our social side. So working with Chris, we're going to try to get this together this year. And that will identify kind of to the staff as far as how things are structured, how things are to be utilized and what the expectation is to the public as well. Establishment of the e-news delivery system. One of the things through the process was that we were supposed to have an e-news system. The vendor came forward with one, but it does not fit the needs of recreation at this time. The town had elected to step away from doing e-news at the time. But I think as we go forward, we have a need to look at reintroducing that. So we're going to look at a third party to help us through that process. Roku, Apple TV, as I mentioned, CDN, our over-the-top delivery mechanisms with COVID and the amount of content we have going forward, we've identified a need to reorganize what we have and make that a little bit more friendly to be able to search and find. And we're going to be working through that process as well. Personnel. With everything going on with all the meetings, we're looking to add a part-time person. And it was budgeted through the budget for 2022. This individual will be working primarily nights, on meeting nights, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays, to assist us with the coverage of the meetings. But also to hope that individual could eventually be an individual that'll be strong enough to conduct a meeting independently. That way, if somebody is sick or out, some people can take vacations again and get some time out of the office. Expense and capital funding. I provided you a list, but primarily it's working towards those items that we have identified as part of our capital plan. And we'll be working with the supervisor on that capital plan with the finance director going forward. But also what we have to do with the grant that's going to be coming. Specialized support. We work with a number of groups and agencies for the website, IT, AV services and engineering. And then as far as outgoing training, we try to keep up with things. We have not had the opportunity to go out and get formal training. Through the pandemic, many things have gone online, which has been great. But we've lost the connectivity with other peers within our industry. But as far as our training goes, it's ongoing. Technology never stops. We can't stop learning the new ways that new things work and how to get things taken care of. And as far as other major projects within the town, our department touches every department. So between website and AV services, there's no department that we don't touch for a special event and/or some of the projects of late. We're assisting the court department with bringing back trials in and their AV needs for that department. And then at the very end, I just kind of gave you a breakdown of month over month, year over year, and what that growth has looked like for us. Questions? Comments, concerns?
Any questions?
Opportunities?
Do want to thank you on behalf of the town for all you've been doing to keep us up and connected. It's required a lot of flexibility. I very much appreciate it.
You're welcome. And I got to, before I leave, is just to thank my staff because the flexibility is not just with myself, but it's with everyone downstairs on the aspect of rotating days, nights, weekends to keep things going and keep the coverage there. So thanks to them.
Thank you for all your support and professionalism.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. And now we have Chris Tane, our Director of Communication. I don't know that you know everyone on the board yet and that they know you. But Chris came on December 6th, I think was your first day. And you came from working at Palmac.
Yep, primarily at Palmac with Wayne Fingerley-Sposi. So my background's predominantly in school PR. So a little different shift, but still within the same realm. So I'm happy to be here. It's been a really, really great first couple of months. It was great working with Tony and now the transition to Marie. And as Dave mentioned, we've worked quite a bit together as well. So pretty good transition here, I think, especially settling into a new role, really having no precedent because Phyllis was, you know, 16 to 20 hours a week. So she was a great resource. So would like to thank her for all of her help as well. Really excited to get started. And I'll walk you through the goals. These, so when we put these together, I was about three weeks in. So now I've about doubled my knowledge, I feel like. So feel free to stop me, ask questions as you go, and I'll be happy to answer things at the end as well. So the first piece that we're really going to focus on this year is our ability to grow social media. So that is a tool that is there. It's free, it's accessible. It's just going to, on our end, it just takes time to develop and developing that content. And so far, I think we've, we've done well in what we've been able to do. And that's going to be an ongoing process throughout the year with a variety of content, building on what was already in place. It's, was a great tool already. We already had a great following, particularly with streaming the events through PC TV that you could follow along on Facebook. So excited to get started with that and looking forward to what we can do moving forward. And with that being said, we are using that tool not only from the, from specifically the town side, but we have also created a tool, a Facebook account for the town supervisor. So that's something new that we have not done in the past. And Marie has taken that on, and I know she's excited to do that. And it's really a, I think, a great medium for us to be able to, seem like people can touch us, right? It's, you see the town supervisor posting on Facebook. I know Marie posted a picture of kids sledding when we had the big snow a couple of weeks ago. It's, it's all about that being personal, showing that the town is here to help. We're not just sitting here at meetings, but we are there to assist people along the way. So excited to get that started. We really had kind of a blank slate. There are a few towns that, that have their supervisor have a page, but ours is really intended for informational purposes and to communicate effectively with people. And Marie and I have been working on that and were able to publish a, Marie's first column, one up on there. So that was, that was great to see and have that personal touch. One other piece I think that, that we'd like to do is promote more brand consistency and develop that from somewhat of a marketing perspective to really make Penfield recognizable to people. When I was coming into this role, I had people speak of other towns and say, I know this slogan or this, this part about the town. What, what about Penfield? What are you, what are you going to do? So I think the beginning of that is really promoting consistency in terms of the way we use our, our seal, the way we communicate with people, our color palette, things like that. So that's something that I'll be working on here in the coming months. It's more of a, I'm thinking second, third quarter piece as I begin to settle into the role and hoping to have a style guide that we can then distribute to all the departments in town. So for instance, when we're creating an informational flyer in, in the building department, that's going to look similar to something that might come from the planning department. So we're able to streamline that process, look better and more professional than we already do and also have people see, okay, this is, this is what I can expect when I get something from the town of Penfield. So we're, we're excited to get that started and already laying the groundwork with that and working with Dave as well. Another piece that I'm excited about and excited to be able to do is really proactively work with the media. So oftentimes, I think many organizations, you're, you're just having to respond to things. But we want to foster those relationships. The media is a great resource to get out all of the great things that are happening in Penfield. Certainly, we as a town can, can put things out. But when you have someone else that's able to tell your story from a different perspective, I think that's incredibly helpful. And we are fortunate to have a few, few stories since I've been here. And Marie was actually highlighted on Channel 8, kind of introducing herself. So it was a Penfield native that did the interview, so that was a great, great connection. And we were excited to be able to do that. And that's something that we hope to do more of moving forward. So as, as we look ahead on, you know, how am I going to be working with all the departments? I think it's similar to what Dave mentioned with PC TV, that what, what the communications department does will touch everybody. So whatever they may need assistance with, content-related, no matter how big, how small, I want to be their, their resource, that second set of eyes and be able to assist however possible. And we've had our first department head meeting that I was, was at. So I got to let everyone know that I am that resource and I'm happy to help. And really just looking forward to getting started. I think there is a ton of room for growth. I think that it's, it's going to be easy to tell the story of Penfield just because there's so many great things going on that, that people don't know about. And ultimately, with all of this work that we do, the goal is to, I call it social capital. So we're letting people know what we're doing on a daily basis. They're seeing the things that they may not normally realize are happening. So then when we go back to them and we may, may ask something of them, you know, whatever it might be, and maybe a bigger, bigger ask, a bigger issue that isn't that daily run-of-the-mill piece, they understand that we are there to communicate with them, not just talk at them. And I think that's what I'm looking forward to doing. And it's really building that story and looking forward to working with, with Marie and really putting out all the great things that are happening. I don't have any reflections on 21 except for the, was it the 28 days I was here, I guess? So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, though, since I know this is an entirely new position, new, new role for all of us. So feel free to ask me whatever you'd like.
Would you be the person that would be potentially working on a newsletter of sorts for the town?
Yeah, so that is something that we are trying to develop. So as of right now, with being cost-efficient in mind, that's something that I've done in-house. So I actually just worked with Marie this week to put together a little template. There's some, some design tools that we have out there. And we're hoping to do that on a monthly basis and then potentially grow from there. A big thing that, that I think is important as we move forward is there's certainly a lot of information to put out. But there is a point where you're putting out so much that people can tune it out. So we want to make sure whatever we're doing is important and useful and not just information for the sake of information. But that's certainly something that we're hoping to do soon.
Are you going to be the one that will be taking photos? You're going to be going around town to have pictures that will accompany such?
Yeah, so I will work with, with Dave and they take some photos and I'll be able to take photos as well. And I think we should have some really good coverage. And we're hoping, speaking of photos and social media, hoping to start Instagram later in the year and make that more of an interactive piece where people can, can have, use the hashtag that we've created and share. use the, the hashtag that we've created and share other photos and really begin to show what Penfield has to offer. We figured we should establish our Twitter and our Facebook page first, really have those running in a successful manner and then move forward with establishing some other social media channels.
Yeah, you can have a lot of fun with that. You know, that one, I'm, I'm way on, they always have a picture of the day, you can submit your picture. That'd be a lot of fun if you did it for Penfield directly and people submit.
Absolutely. And I, I joke that when I worked in the school district, when we had Instagram, with the kids, you never know what, what they may, may post or say. So I think that we'll have a little, a little more fun with the town hopefully on what we can and can't do.
I think actually it's aging. I love Instagram. I post a lot of pictures.
I do too, and I think I'm, I think it's, I don't know, maybe, everyone is using, you know, TikTok and whatnot, and I think it's even evolved from there, but maybe I'm getting old too. I don't know.
Okay. I have a question. Are you working with Town Legal with respect to some of these postings? And the more you insert yourself in the public sphere, specifically under a government entity, and in some ways could be representing, you know, the board? I'm curious as to what protocol you might have with some of the uploads and information and content you're developing.
Yeah, so what specifically are you talking about? So on a day-to-day basis, when we're talking, just posting a picture of a plow out on the road, that's not something that, that we would run through legal. But for instance, our reassessment communications, that is something that, that we reach out and, and we speak with legal representation and make sure that what we're putting out is in line with what needs to be said.
Okay, so there's a process of some sorts of what would be triaged through legal?
Yep, and, and we're further working on that, and Dave touched on that a bit, but to further solidify those guidelines, and that's something that's, that's in process. Yep.
I'm glad there's some supervision, Dave.
No, it's, it's been something we recognized earlier on. It took a little time to get through last year, just seeing things, but that's where the initiation to the archiving has begun. And from the earlier discussions with legal, there is a process that we're working on, but that's where, between the website and social media, working with Chris, we have to develop this as a unified document. We need a public-facing side of that as well as a staff-facing side of it.
Chris, I know I met you last month, so I'm welcome. I just want to say, you know, as brand stewards here, you know, of our town, you know, I think you offer fresh, fresh ideas and fresh eyes, and I'd love to, I love what you're saying about, you know, how you want to get out there and find out the, you know, how to promote our town more. And so besides social media, just in general, any suggestions you have for us too, you know, what we can do? We, you know, we always appreciate that. So I just think that, you know, that you're a great asset to, to have, and so we appreciate that because we, you know, want to make our town, make sure the residents know all the good things that we all see and hear and every day here.
Absolutely.
As in town and around town in the community. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And like I said, it's, it's been great getting started and looking forward to what we're, what we're able to do. I know Marie and I are very similar in that we have, like, after a while, it's only been a month, it's only been two months, and there's so many things that we want to do, but, you know, you want to make sure whatever you start out with is, is successful and then build on that. So really looking forward to that, and I, and I appreciate what you said.
I do want to mention that Chris and Dave and I, the three of us meet weekly to go through upcoming things, you know, what's happened in the past, strategize a little bit about communication, and I think it's been a very productive relationship. We meet Thursdays at 11:00, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll see you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.
Anything else for Chris or Dave?
Great job, guys.
Yes, thank you so much, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes goals and priorities for the evening, and I should mention too that we did have Heidi Bale scheduled for building and fire marshal, but she is ill tonight, so we will reschedule her for later in the month of February. We will take a five-minute break, and then we'll be back for our work session. So thank you very much.